Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, January 21st. My name is Rick Vest, Chair of the Board. Next to me is Krista Yocum, Vice Chair. To her left is Matt Schulthein. To my right is Sean Flowerday and Chelsea Johnson. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All writ materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on January 14th, 2025?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve any discussion. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthein?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, Claims, two A. Approval of the claims processed through January 17th, 2025?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the claims. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Schulthein?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, Approval of a Claim to Youth for Christ in the Amount of $10,000.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve.
I'll just make a comment. I work at Youth for Christ, so I'm going to abstain from this, although this does not benefit me personally.
I gather you have no objections to it, though.
Correct.
Okay, let's go with that. We have a motion and a second to approve. Item B, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthein?
Abstain.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two C, Approval of a Claim to the Mediation Center in the Amount of $7,900.
I move, I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the claim for the mediation center. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthein?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Brings us to item three, our consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of: A, Amendments to the following county contracts; C-08-0531 with the Lower Platte South NRD and the Nebraska Game of Parks Commission; the matter of receiving Federal Highway Administration funding to build the motocross track located at 8033 Arbor Road, Lincoln; two, C-18-0155 with Graybar Electric Company Incorporated; for electrical, lighting, data communications, security products and related services and solutions; B, Right-of-Way contracts with Roger and Susan Byrne, South 46th Street and Brandon Boulevard, the total amount of $22,030; C, a grant contract with the Asian Community and Cultural Center for the Child Care Assistance Program in the amount of $30,000; and D, receive and place on file the county sheriff report.
I move approval of the consent agenda. Consent items.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any comments? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthein?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item four, our public hearings. Our first public hearing is four A, Text Amendment 24012 to amend Lancaster County zoning regulations. Article two definitions, Article 4.005, permitted conditional uses; Article 4.007, permitted special uses; and Article 13, Special Permits, by adding a new definition for annual attraction event, changing agricultural attraction from a conditional to a special permitted use with conditions, removing amusement licenses and adding a conditional use annual attraction event, and repealing Articles 2.002A, 4.005, and 4.007.
We will now open the public hearing.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. I'll be very brief. What brought this forth, as you may recall, is the state repealed the use of the amusement license in previous legislative session, and that repeal became effective July 18, 2024. The requirement to obtain an amusement license is currently found in both the Lancaster County zoning regulations and the City of Lincoln zoning ordinance. Statistically, in 2022 and 2023, there were about seven amusement licenses issued each year, so not a huge number of these. The county board discussed options on July 18, 2024, and the direction that was received was twofold. One, to keep the limit of one event per year for the uses which are not agricultural attractions with registration of the event by the county clerk for tracking purposes; and then, second, to create a special permit for agricultural attraction in the zoning regulations. This would allow for review and public input on the scale of the proposed facility. So in terms of the regulation components, there's really four articles that are affected. The first is an amendment to the definitions that would add a new definition for annual attraction event. This would, in essence, correspond to what was allowed through the amusement license as an annual event in terms of use, so a conditional use; an amendment to the conditional uses article by deleting the agricultural attraction as a conditional use and deleting reference to the now obsolete amusement license; amending Article four to add the special permit for agricultural attraction; and then Article 13 for the criteria for the special permit. There is the related city version of this, which went to City Council last Monday, the 13th, and there was no objection to that ordinance. The one difference between the county and the city versions, I would note, is pertaining to the traffic submittal under the special permit. The county engineer preferred to have flexibility with submitting average daily traffic as opposed to having a numerical threshold for traffic criteria, which the city version has reference to the access management plan of 100 vehicle trips per day. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for George? Not all public hearings are controversial. I think this one's been pretty straightforward. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
We will go through the protocol, though. Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the proposed changes? Anyone here to speak in favor of the proposed changes? Seeing none, anyone opposed to the changes? And no one opposed? Anyone neutral? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on Text Amendment 24012.
Commissioners, that brings us to the public hearing four B, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24006 to adjust the Priority Growth Areas Map, Future Service Limit Boundary, and Future Land Use Map in the 2025 Comprehensive Plan for approximately 193 acres located near 84th Street and Rokeby Road.
We will now open the public hearing on Plan Amendment 24006.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Eckert with Sil Design Group, representing 84 Ventures LLC, a family-owned LLC on land that they've owned for some time here in the far southeast corner of Lincoln. We are getting some sewer and water mains to this property in 2025, and so we've worked with the city to expand the future service limits of Lincoln to take in this 193 acres. And so, pretty standard, straightforward. We come to you with unanimous staff report, well, staff support, unanimous Planning Commission vote, and a unanimous City Council vote to do the same, but as it is a comprehensive plan amendment that you share authority with, we're before you today asking for your approval as well.
Any questions for Mike? It's Mike, correct?
Yes.
I want to make sure I got... Mike, I just, I noticed from the information that we have, this is very far southeast, south of Yankee Hill Road, this 193 acres.
Yes, yes. So we're reaching the edge of the basin that we can sewer by gravity under the city's policy, but you're correct, we're within a quarter mile of Sutillo Road and a half a mile of the Beltway, so it would be a good urban area for folks to be able to utilize the Beltway. But yeah, this is essentially about as far southeast as we can go, in my opinion, probably for, well, several years until the Stevens Creek Basin gets developed clear to the south, so.
It just points to two points there that come away for me, is that, one, the City of Lincoln continues to grow in development, and the south Beltway is a mechanism for that same activity.
Yeah, no, this is a great spot for it. We're at the end of the pipeline for sewer, so the pipes are smaller, more affordable, water mains are in place, and so, yeah, we'll be able to utilize that investment.
Any other questions for my Commissioners? Thank you for being here, sir. Any members of the public wishing to speak in support of the Amendment 24006? Any members wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, any members wishing to speak in opposition to Amendment 24006? Seeing no members in opposition, anyone neutral? We will close the hearing on that item as well.
Commissioners, that brings us to item five, our public hearing action items. After a public hearing has been concluded and closed, action on the item that was subject to the public hearing we scheduled as a separate public hearing action item. Because the public hearing has been conducted and closed on that item, no further testimony or evidence will be accepted or admitted during the public hearing action item portion of the agenda. That is, five A, a resolution in the matter of the county special permit 24036 for a large solar facility on property generally located from West Princeton Road to West Gage Road, from southwest 29th Street to Highway 77, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
So to be clear, this is the vote that we scheduled as a follow-up to the public hearing that we had last week on this permit. So I know the Commissioners have a lot of thoughts they want to share this morning. We're going to take it one at a time, make sure everybody gets to express themselves on this. Commissioner Schulthein?
Yeah, we had significant opposition from the neighbors and rural residents, many who are here today. As I look at this, I feel like there's some overstated local tax benefits, some overstated environmental benefits, some real concerns from the neighbors, so I'd actually like to make a motion today to deny the special permit.
All right. Motion to deny. Is there a second? Motion to deny. I'm not seeing a second. Motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, then I'd, seeing as there's no interest in denying the permit, I want to make this project the best possible for the people in the neighborhoods. I've got a rather complex motion here. Mr. Clerk, I don't know if you could put this up on the screen so people could see? I think it'd be good to walk through it. I want to, this motion is going to increase the setbacks to push the solar panels further back from houses, non-participating houses. It's going to require the developer to address some significant fire concerns, which were, I think we heard very loudly and very clearly. I want to improve the screening as well for the people in the neighborhood. I think Commissioner Flowerday really gave some good thoughts on this, and then as well want to address the Chinese technology that was included in the original application. So let me, what do you think's the best way? It's kind of long. Should I read the whole thing, or should I go through each? What do you think's the best?
You can summarize, I think.
Okay.
This, I mean, if you, I don't know if everybody can read it from there. But it reads at the top, "I move to approve special permit 24036 as recommended for approval by the Planning Commission." So this...
With, with the following?
Yeah, with the following conditions. So, I mean, I think you're submitting this as a motion to approve, correct?
Okay, so let me, yes, I'm submitting this as a motion to approve.
And I'll go ahead and second that.
Second, okay, then let me talk through...
If we have a motion and a second, Matt, why don't you summarize?
So, number one, A, says to increase the setbacks from non-participating houses to 450 feet, which is significantly further than the previously proposed, that's a good football field and a half away from any non-participating houses, which I think is, puts us equal to, all of these match or exceed the Salt Creek thing, but I think that really creates a good buffer for non-participating people. Number two says, before receiving building permits, that the developer shall provide documents to the Planning Department to prove that the developer has provided the Hallam, Cortland, Firth, Creek, Hickman, and Claytonia Rural Fire Districts all pertinent information in case of a fire of emergency on site, not limited to 24-hour contact information, access points, locations of shut-offs, circulation patterns, et cetera. The final sentence says, "The developer shall provide, at developer's sole cost, any equipment, keys, or codes as necessary for the Rural Fire Department to gain entry to the site in case of emergency." Number three, improves the screening, which will make it less visible to the public. And there was some increased screening requirements that the Planning Department provided, but this goes a step further and makes it even more clear that there should be six pine evergreen trees every 100 linear foot. The previous one did not have a good, clear...
Yeah, the work I did on this one was, the Planning Commission, I think, was well-intentioned in trying to increase screening, but they didn't actually specify the spacing. So this is the spacing from the original text amendment put back in, in addition to, this doesn't remove anything the planning did, this sort of, I was trying to belt and suspenders the vegetative screening stuff here.
Then the fourth portion of my motion says, "To protect the public health, safety, and general welfare, developers shall not utilize in this project any parts or components manufactured by entities identified as Chinese military companies operating in the United States according with," and then it label, it references the National Defense Act, which I think is, Commissioner Flowerday pointed that out, and we absolutely want to make sure that we're using good technology here.
And for the record, I just want to state clearly that this, this list, it's referenced as Section 1260H of the William M. Thornberry National Defense Authorization Act for fiscal year 2021. This is a dynamic list, so the DOD continues to put or take off companies, depending on how they offend or don't offend, on this list. Right now, there's, I know DJI is on this list. I believe CATL was just added at the end of last year. Huawei, there are a number of Chinese military companies that are currently on this list, and this should, this should prevent any use of their parts or components, and I don't, I'm not sure if the, I just wanted to say thank you to the gentleman who referenced, there you are, thank you to the gentleman who referenced that for me because I didn't catch that before, so.
Very good. Matt, anything more?
Not at this point.
Okay, so we have a motion. Matt has clarified the caveats that he has proposed. Commissioner Flowerday?
I'm supportive of this. I seconded it. I appreciate Commissioner Schulthein kind of talking some of this through with me and working through it. I think this, like he said, I think this matches or exceeds everything we did with Salt Creek Solar.
Okay.
I think this is a good, you know, it's, I mean, I'm certain that there are going to be people in here who aren't happy about it. I'm certain that there's going to be people in here who aren't happy about this on both sides, but I think at the end of the day, this lets us, this lets us move forward in a positive way with also trying to put in some quality of life and some, you know, safety precautions in place for the citizens around the area. You know, the thing that I just want to say on this is fundamentally, we can have a conversation about whether or not we like solar, or whether we don't like solar, or whether we think it's appropriate for this area or not. The special permit, this board's job is to go through the special permit application and evaluate whether or not this company has, whether or not this applicant has met the requirements set forth in the text amendment, and it's just very clear that they have to me. They've gone through, and in fact, I heard a lot of people say that they didn't want it. I heard a lot of people say that they had concerns. I never heard a single argument that they didn't match what was set forth in the text amendment, and that they didn't, and that they, I never heard that the special permit was deficient. And, you know, perhaps we have to evaluate the text amendment. We can have that conversation, but that's a different conversation than whether or not this special permit was deficient, and I just think it clearly wasn't. And planning, you know, the Planning Commission felt the same way, the Planning Department made the same recommendation. So I think this is, these are some good quality of life changes and some safety changes, so I'm going to be supportive of this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Yocum, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Flowerday, because that was exactly what I was thinking. I appreciate the thoroughness of this application when it came to us, because it did comply. That was certainly important, and, you know, clean and renewable energy can provide power across the United States and across the world, and should deliver authentic benefits to communities, and I think that's what we're looking for when we talk about using local labor, that sort of thing. But it's our responsibility to be sure that it complies with the text amendment and that it works for a county that is fairly populated, as our county is. This, this project really has, yeah, as we continue to face uncertainty of the future revenues, such as inheritance tax being compromised and threatened, we need to look at opportunities to relieve the people of the county from bearing the brunt through property tax, and this is why it's incumbent on us to diversify our sources of revenue and look at what works for our county.
Thank you, Krista. Commissioner?
Well, I think all the Commissioners that have gone before me summarized my thoughts pretty well. I agree that there were no deficiencies with the application as it pertains to the text amendment that we currently have. I think with decisions like this, to Commissioner Flowerday's point, no one's going to be 100% happy with what we are putting forward today. We are putting forward more stringent requirements than are currently in the text amendment. I think that is good. I think that we are working to address many of the concerns that were raised during the public hearing. And to Commissioner Yocum's point, something that I heard over and over again knocking doors is that we have a property tax problem, and there's only a few ways that we can really address that. We can cut services, we can expand the tax base, and this is how we can expand the tax base to try to help address some of those property tax issues that we have in our county. So I do have, so I support Commissioner Schulthein's motion. I do have a friendly amendment related to some of the erosion and vegetation concerns that were raised at the public hearing. Matt, could I get this to you?
You've got these of it?
I do. So my friendly amendment addresses, like I said, some of the erosion and vegetative management concerns that were raised. So in addition to everything that Commissioner Schulthein recommended, I would like to add, in addition to the requirements contained with an Exhibit I, Vegetative Management and Landscape Screening Plan, as recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, "Before site preparation begins, developers shall consult with the Lancaster County Weed Control Superintendent to identify noxious weeds currently present on participating parcels and submit to the superintendent a plan satisfactory to the superintendent to prevent the spread of any already present noxious weeds." And this is kind of long, so I'll summarize, I suppose, the rest. Throughout the life of the project, the developer shall work with the weed superintendent on weed management pursuant to the Noxious Weed Control Act. The second part of this relates to the planting of permanencies or temporary cover crop. It just says that if the developer is going to utilize the broadcast method, that they need to increase the amount of live seeds per square foot. That just helps to ensure that the seed actually takes. When you're using broadcast method, it's just not as, this will help make sure that the seeds actually take. Okay. Next, drainage.
It's a fuller ground cover.
Thank you, yes. So the next, relating to the runoff and erosion, it actually is putting in place what County Engineer Dingman brought to us last week, related to some recommendations she had for stormwater runoff and drainage. And then lastly, to address some of those dust control concerns, ensuring that the developer utilizes dust control measures throughout construction and throughout the life of the project as recommended by the county engineer.
I would second this. This is a friendly amendment. Do we have to ask for...
Yeah, since it's a friendly amendment, Commissioner... Yeah, since, since it's a friendly amendment, Commissioner Schulte gets, the only distinction of a friendly amendment is, is that the, the original person gets the opportunity to be the second, basically.
That's what I thought. So Matt, you, this is a friendly amendment proposed by Chelsea.
Yes, yeah, I mean, looks like this is in, especially, I, I think that's a good catch. We had heard a lot about runoff, and so improving that worrying language to make it, yeah, I'll absolutely second that.
Lancaster County, I don't think you've ever had a commissioner who thought more about, about ground cover vegetation plans and runoff than Commissioner Johnson. This is, this is new to us here, and we've never spent this much time on this, but I think it's good.
This is my line, and you're stealing my line here, but I just, this is an example of Commissioner Johnson bringing her field of expertise. We're five members, we all have five different areas of life experience and expertise. Chelsea's bringing hers, and this is a welcome addition to the other parts of the amendment. So anything else, Chelsea?
No, that is it.
All right, thank you. So then, I have a few things to say. I'm trying to decide how much of it's actually helpful. You know, as has been pointed out by the commissioners, we face a myriad of responsibilities when we sit here in these chairs. These types of issues are the most personal because the people involved are going to be directly impacted, and there's a lot of groups that have a vested stake in this. The challenge for us is to take all that input in and find the most responsible decision available. And some, it's been considered compared to threading a needle. How do we listen to all that input that we received? Over 50 emails that we all read, phone calls, six hours of public testimony. How do we take that all in, put it together, and come up with the best plan possible? What you're seeing today is an honest attempt on our part to do that. And I think everything else I have to say has probably already been said. I do want to say one thing. This map that was provided, and I don't know if that gentleman's here, very helpful, appreciate it greatly. And so I'm going to offer two more friendly amendments. Commissioner Schulte, the first one, and I've given you all a copy of this, and I will give you a copy. I'd like to have him for one more minute, and then I could give them to you, but let me get my notes straight. The first one is wording to suggest local contractors and union workers. We saw a significant group of people come in and testify in favor of this project based on the fact that they're ready, willing, and able to be a part of the construction process. So we cannot obligate private entities who they hire and use, but I propose the following language. Lancaster County strongly encourages NextEra to demonstrate their commitment to being a good neighbor by using local contractors whenever possible in the construction and maintenance of the proposed solar facility. In recognition of the vital role of unions in our workforce, we also strongly encourage that 50% of the labor workers on this project be union members. Two unions gave strong testimony in the public hearing, and it is our belief that their support deserves to be rewarded. I would propose this as a friendly amendment, Matt.
I'll give someone else the chance to second that. I'm not.
I'll second it.
Okay, so procedurally, what does that mean? Because I realize we're crossing some lines here with this one. We cannot require anyone who they hire or not, but we are suggesting, we are making our preferences known.
You know what? Should we take the vote on Chelsea? It, it, the attorneys are looking at me. Should we take the vote on, before we add, because you're not amending Chelsea's amendment?
I'm not amending Chelsea. I'm not, and I'm trying to amend the motion to approve.
But we need to do the underlying amendment before we get back to the underlying motion.
Matt accepted it. Do we still need to vote on it if Matt accepted it?
I think so.
So you defer, just to be clear, so you deferred it to someone else to amend it?
I think the question is, do we need to vote on Chelsea's friendly?
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, we'll have to vote on Chelsea's, or Commissioner Johnson, sorry, friendly amendment first, and then we'll go to yours.
So the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Made by Commissioner Johnson, approved by Commissioner Schulte about the ground cover language, which we have and the clerk will have. Any other discussion on that? We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Okay. So my understanding is?
Now the local contractors and union workers amendment, now you can offer that, and I offer, and I second it.
And we have a second.
Yes.
Yeah, and so any further discussion on adding that wording to the special permit?
Yeah, I appreciate this, this additional language. I think this project has the additional opportunity to add the vibrancy of Lancaster County by generating and growing these additional economic opportunities related to workforce by using union and local workforce when possible. Growing this specific workforce, this is what these people have trained for, is really important locally to us, and it's an advantage to the, to the project to have local people who can respond when service is needed.
Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
No.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, so that addition will go on. Okay, finally, I have one more, and this one, I'm going to read it again. And let me give background for this, because we've been doing this for, ever since I came into office here, and at the first hearing we had, my cousin drove all the way from Blue Hill, Nebraska to testify about the impact of wind turbines on her property. She was nonparticipating, and yet the restrictions on how close they could be to houses were very loose in the county she lives in, and that left an impression with me. The corporation that did this didn't hate her, they just did not take fully into account the impact they were having on her. So I was especially touched by four properties, and I'm going to read this through. "I propose that the special permit require compensation for landowners where the solar farm input comes up to their property on three or more sides, with one side separated only by a county road," if that would be the fourth side. Specifically, this would include Isaac and Kimberly Robinson at 767 Princeton Road, who have three sides, Craig and Amanda Shaw at 2810 Southwest 14th Street, who are surrounded on three sides, Allen and Bonnie Brant, 25200 Southwest Second, who are surrounded on four sides, and Owen and Genevieve Huskenvelt, 28405 Southwest Second, surrounded on four sides. "I propose compensation to the Robinsons and Shaws to 20% of the Lancaster County appraised value as of January 1st, 2025. Payments of 10% of this appraised value to be made on January 1st, 2026, and a second payment of 10% of the appraised value on January 1st, 2027. For the Brants and the Huskenvelts, I propose payment equal to 50% of their appraised value on January 1st, 2025. Five equal payments to be made beginning on January 1st, 2026, and continuing each January 1st in successive years until the fifth payment is made." These folks in particular captured my attention. I think any reasonable person would say they are likely to solve, have some economic impact. This is my way of addressing those four properties. I would propose this as a friendly amendment as well.
I will absolutely accept that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This one, I'm, I'm gonna, you know, Commissioner Best, I love working with you, and I think you're really, really fighting hard to try to protect people in this project. This one does lose my support. Number one, I actually, I don't think that, I'm not sure legally we can do this, I'm going to be honest. I, I don't think the county in a special permit can mandate that two private entities come to a contract. I think that was one of the issues that we even ran into with the, the union language. Trust me, if I could, if I thought I could mandate a, a, a project labor agreement on this thing, I would. It, it also, I, I feel like we're just, I feel like we're picking winners and losers here, and I do agree that these are people who are going to be impacted by the project probably more than others, but it just, I, I'm not with you here on this one.
Okay. We can still be friends.
Yeah.
We've done this before, by the way. So I appreciate your comments. Any other discussion, any other commissioners want to add before I offer a final comment?
I would just say, I, I, the, the land valuation is a significant issue, especially for people who are surrounded on multiple sides, like you've identified. And I think the, the, the data we saw, the data I've looked at, shows that there is a significant impact, and so asking them to help the neighbors, I think it seems very appropriate, and I think can help address a lot of the concerns that the adjacent neighbors are experiencing with property valuations.
Thank you, Commissioner. You don't have to speak if you don't want to, but I want to make sure we don't miss anybody. I would just say then, in closing, if you look at the map, most of the folks on the map have a mile setback in at least two directions, possibly three, and sometimes more than that much setback. So while they're going to be impacted, I think it doesn't raise my level of concern like I do the four that are mentioned. If you look on the map, literally, two of them are in the middle of green sections where there is no side that will not have solar farm, the potential for solar farm. I don't know where they'll place panels. The two other properties, they have their main, they're on a main road, and they have one side that will be no solar impact. So I think we're asking a company that produces a commodity that we all want, we all want electricity, they're going to go in and produce it in our community, a $600 million development. The cost of this is one-tenth of 1% approximately, give or take, and I feel like those four landowners deserve some recognition for their participation in this, whether willing or unwilling. That's why I made the motion, so.
Fair enough.
Very good. We have a motion and a second on the proposal for compensation on four properties. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
No.
Flowerday?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Best?
Yes. Motion fails, so.
I do think it's really well-intentioned, and I do understand where you're coming from with it.
Well.
I also don't want to seem cruel for denying it, but not having had a chance to look at it before this makes it really hard, and again, I have some concerns whether or not we can actually legally do this.
Well, there's one way to find out.
Sure.
If we can do it or not.
Sure.
Okay, with that, we have a motion to approve the special permit based on?
Yeah, with the, the Schulte and the Johnson amendments.
Yeah, based on the inclusion of those amendments. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say a couple closing thoughts. First of all, I really appreciate everybody who took the time to come out. The amount of time, a six-and-a-half-hour meeting is, as far as I know, unheard of around here. It has not been my experience, and the patience that many of you showed to sit here and wait your turn, I was also very impressed by the fact that people didn't just get up and repeat each other, but really pointed out many different facets of the project that needed to be addressed or considered as a part of it. I had, did not get a chance to speak last week. Obviously, for the most part, we were just asking questions and learning, but I have extreme skepticism about solar. I don't particularly like the location of this being installed in someone's backyard. The people that came to oppose this all live in the area, and so I hear you abundantly. The only people that came to support it live in Lincoln and Omaha, and to those people, I would say, put a solar panel in your backyard, put it over your parking lot, put it on top of your factory, but doesn't need to be in somebody else's backyard. So if solar, if so beneficial, I would encourage Lincoln and Omaha people to fight to get it in, in your neighborhood, rather than installing it in somebody else's neighborhood. Despite, even though I have all those, I've heard you clearly, I am opposed to it. I do think that the best I can do right now is get you guys the biggest setbacks we can, address the fire concerns, improve the screening so that it does not get so much in the way of being so visible, and making sure we don't have Chinese technology. So I want you to know, I heard you, I fought for you, I am going to vote for this because I do think this is the best we can do without denying the permit today. So that's my intention.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other last thoughts? I would just say that there are solar pan, I have neighbors who have solar panels on their roof, literally. I saw people are doing this, but.
I have a solar farm in my neighborhood that went through a city process. Small, it's very small.
All that aside, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries. I, I do really quickly, just point of personal privilege, want to echo Commissioner Schulte's comments about this crowd. We've been through so many public hearings that didn't go as smoothly as, as all that, and just thank you all for your interest.
All right, Mr. Clerk, we will proceed with the meeting.
All right. Item 6, New Business, 6A, resolution on the matter of fixing the date, time, and place for the public hearing regarding a request to vacate portions of a public road, more particularly described in Exhibit A and located in Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Do we have anyone here from engineering?
Commissioners, just a clarification, is this the road vacation for Northwest 141?
This is 6A.
It's, it's, Andrew, say that again, please.
Is this the road vacation for North 141?
John, John, if you'd come forward, please.
This is setting a public hearing.
Morning. I apologize, I didn't hear what you said due to all the people walking back there. This is for the road vacation, for the request, this is for a hearing. This is the road that you guys are aware of. It's North 141st Street. We have been in contact with the adjacent property owners, part of the packet that you either have seen or will see, cause concern, some letters, or just contain some letters from them, and they're okay with this vacation. So this is setting, I believe, setting the hearing date in, in February.
February 4th at 9:00 a.m., to be precise.
Yep.
I move approval.
Second. A motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries.
6B, an interlocal agreement with the City of Lincoln, authorizing the county to use the city's right-of-way in Holdridge Street, Adams Street, North 84th Street, to detour traffic during construction of county road improvements located at the intersection of North 148th Street and Holdridge. There's no cost to the county.
Morning, Commissioners. Larry Legg, Assistant County Engineer, Lancaster County Engineering. This is one, another one of our federal aid projects. We're adding turn lanes at 148th and Holdridge, and Holdridge will be closed for a good portion of that project. I think the, the, it's about a three-month project to get this done. So this is to establish an agreement with the City of Lincoln to use the city streets to, for the detour of Holdridge, which goes Holdridge to 84th to Adams, and then back to 148th. We hope to be letting this, state will be letting this project in the next two to three months. So it'll be constructed this coming construction season. Any questions?
Progress? Progress on 148th?
With federal aid, it's slow but steady. That's what we like to say.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Commissioners, for 6C, I have a note that we, from the county attorney, to hold, so I'll move on to item 6D. It's a contract with Ayers and Ayers to provide Roca roof repair. It's a contract with Ayers and Ayers to provide Roca roof repair. The cost to the county is not to exceed $99,303. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Six E is a special events permit application from Jason Straubin for the Good Life Adventures LLC for a run bicycle event to be held on February 15th, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Hello, Commissioners, good to see you. Exciting meeting here this morning. So usually it's nice and calm, so this was a fun one to be at. Um, I only really get to see you guys every six months, so kind of an update from Gravel Worlds in August. Uh, it was a great event and it's kind of my time I get to thank the people that support us. So a huge shout out to, um, the Lancaster Sheriff's, LPD, LFR, and the county engineers as well, uh, helping our event go off in August. Uh, John and his crew, it wouldn't be a year without a bridge getting washed out or something, uh, the week of the event, that we were able to, uh, still have the event safely and successfully because the county engineers really helped us out. So, um, definitely want to shout that out and thank you to all the county resources that, that help us out, um, for our big event in August. Um, we were able to support $55,000 to nonprofits last year, most of those staying here in Nebraska and in Lincoln, Lancaster County. Um, a big one of those was, uh, Lincoln Parks Project at Mahoney Park. We're putting in a water fountain and a new trail access, uh, to the, uh, the trail that goes out there, uh, out of town, as well as supporting Star City BMX up by Oak Lake. Um, those were two ones we're really proud of this year. So, um, none of that would be possible without the support of the county and obviously our gravel family, as we call them, coming in and supporting us. So, um, and we've committed $100,000 to charities this year for, for all of our events. So we're really excited for that. Um, but yeah, this is for our winter race, much, much smaller, very low-key, 150-ish participants. So nice and small, get people out in the winter and staying motivated through, uh, days like today when it's minus 11 this morning, getting out and riding and running. So, um, yeah, really chill event. It's going to be out at, we're going to try our winter race out at the Sandhills Global Event Center, uh, on 84th. We haven't ever done our winter race there. Um, we really liked having our, our August event there, so we're going to try it. Uh, but we might find a, a more affordable option since it is a smaller event, so we can, uh, eventually donate more money. Uh, but we'll see. So, um, but yeah, it's pretty straightforward. We already have, uh, eight states signed up for our February event coming up here, uh, as far away as New Jersey and Texas. So those Texas people are going to be getting a rude wake-up call if it's cold like today. Uh, but yeah, so we're, we're really excited. February 15th, Valentine's Day weekend. Um, and we're going to do a couple fundraising type events at Good Life Cyclery, um, a new bike shop here in town, uh, to raise money for kids with autism and Down Syndrome to learn to ride bikes. So, um, we're going to do a fundraiser for that on Thursday night, um, not Valentine's night. I don't think many people would show up to a bike shop on Valentine's Day night, but, uh, but yeah. So we'll be having that activation throughout the week as well. So. Uh, and then again, thank you to, uh, John and the county engineers for helping with the route. Um, we will be going out to Eagle this year for that race, which, uh, for our winter race as well as, uh, so one of the courses goes to Eagle and one of the courses goes to, um, Malcolm. So some mostly in Lancaster and some over to our neighbors to the east, so.
So in April, there's going to be a bike ride from the event center to Eagle?
In February, yeah. So this one's February. Uh, my, my buddy who's doing another event, he's, he's coming up next, which is exciting that there's more events coming, uh, bringing people into town. So Trevor's up behind me. Uh, we're not associated with the event. We do help them with tents and, um, some nutrition and things like that. We're always there to support other events, but, uh, this one's for winter endurance in, in February, so.
There you go. Very good. Good to have you here, sir.
Thank you, guys, all.
Yeah, thank you for always complying and being good to work with our departments. I would move approval. And just for the record, I want to say I have a son that rode to work and home from work in this weather yesterday.
Okay, yesterday.
Yesterday and today. No.
Oh, my goodness.
Took off this morning as well.
It's nice working from home now, so I like that days today, like today.
We have a motion.
You second?
I, I, I made the motion.
Oh, I'm second. Sorry.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Please, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to six F, a special events permit application from Trevor Slonik on behalf of Gravel Quest LLC for a bicycle event to be held on April 5th, 2025, at 8:00 AM.
Uh, good morning. My name is Trevor Slonik. Um, I'm organizing a gravel cycling event called the Orbital Odyssey, um, in April of this year, April 5th. Uh, it starts at the Branch Oak Observatory. Uh, the format's a little different than, um, Jason's event. Uh, it's a backyard gravel ultra, so the backyard format is a shorter course. So we'll be doing like a 12-mile loop every hour on the hour until there's, uh, one cyclist that remains. So, um, bit of a, a test of endurance, um, not so much how far you can go, but, uh, can you outlast everybody else? So, um, I do, I did print, um, the proposed route, give you kind of an idea. Kind of just throw it up.
Oh, come on.
Yeah, there you go. Pretty nifty, maybe.
It just takes a second.
There you go. I don't know. This is Malcolm right here. Um, so. The, uh, the observatory is just half a mile south of Branch Oak Lake, so, uh, love to answer any questions you guys have.
No, we're always excited, Jason, or Trevor, to have these events. We really appreciate the people putting in a lot of hard work to make them happen, so.
So, yeah, it should be pretty small this year. Uh, we're, I mean, I'd love to have 50 to 100 riders, so. Um, but there's one thing about, uh, Nebraska in April, and that's usually, it's cold and windy, so we'll see.
I was going to say, I mean.
No guarantees.
How can anyone say no to endless 12-mile loops?
Exactly, exactly.
On April 5th, that just sounds awful.
Yeah.
I move approval.
Yeah, I, I will second that. I thought about saying that sounds good. This sounds like fun, but I don't think it does.
But I move approval.
There you go.
Glad you're doing it.
I bless those who'd like it. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
These really are great events.
Yeah.
Please call the roll, Matt.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Brings us to six G, recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county sheriff's office to enter a sole source contract with Brown Brothers Construction Incorporated for additional labor and materials related to the sheriff's office first-floor remodel product, project. The cost to the county is $62,619.59. Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item seven, the legislative update.
The only thing I would say for this, we took a position last week on, um, LB 116, which is Senator Ballard's bill to, uh, it cleans up some convention center language and it provides counties extra flexibility in the improvement fund. Um, that, they are going to, uh, that bill is set for a hearing on Thursday. I just think we should send Joe O'Brennan to represent the county.
I support that.
Yeah.
And I've kind of given Joe a heads up that I thought that might be where we go, so they're not surprised, but, so I guess I would make, make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Motion and second to send Joe O'Brennan to that hearing. Please call the roll.
Uh, Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't have anything else for the legislative update.
We'll move forward.
Item eight is executive session.
I move that we go into executive session for pending litigation, potential litigation, which is imminent as evidenced by communication of a claim or threat of litigation to or by the public body and legal advice and to protect the public entrance, interest at 9:55 AM.
I would second.
Motion and a second to go into executive session. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes. We are now in executive session for.
My motion, we come out of executive session at 10:39.
Second.
Motion of second, come out of executive session, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item nine, public comment. Those of members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to make comment? Seeing none, move on, Matt.
Item 10, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, January 23rd, 2025 at 8:30 a.m. in room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, January 28th, 2025 at 9 a.m., room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on L-N-K TV. L-N-K TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Sprecher Channel 1300. For rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE.gov. L-N-K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item 11 is adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn, please call the roll.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second.
The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second.
The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second.
The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second.
The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the election of officers, so the election of the 2025 officers of the Lancaster County Board of Equalization.
I nominate Rick Vest as chair and Kristi Yocum as vice chair of the Board of Equalization.
Second. The motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll. Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025.
I move second.
Motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rules.
I move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rules.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 4 is the public hearing on the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications. The Lincoln Lancaster Habitat for Humanity, St. Joseph's Catholic Church and School, Trinity Lutheran Church and School, Lincoln Lutheran Middle School and High School, and Goodwill Industries Serving Southeast Nebraska Incorporated.
I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to testify related to the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Seeing no one, we'll move on.
Item 5 is our public hearing action items. 5A is the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Is approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve any discussion, please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned.